I'd like to call the December 19th, 2016 zoning, regularly scheduled zoning meetings ordered. So far, we've called the meeting ordered.
That's it.
That's about it.
Thanks, Jamie.
Just like a crack, like crack. You care.
Thanks, Chairman.
Appointment of alternates. Mike, I'm going to appoint you now for Chairman Ryan.
Thank you, sir.
And then the minutes of the December 5th meeting. Does anybody have any, want to have any discussion about those? Want to have a chance to review them?
I think for Jim, I didn't have any questions.
Okay. I think we'll just approve them as they've been submitted, bearing no recommendation for change. Public hearings. Mr. Secretary.
How did you manage? Public hearing, application 1650 of the Town of Simsbury zoning commission for a proposed text amendment to the Town of Simsbury zoning regulations to be enacted as Article 3, Section A, 1 dot A for six-month moratorium as in addition to the previously approved 12-month moratorium, which would have expired on January 9th, 2017, and will now expire on July 10th, 2017, on applications for or approvals of permits for development under Article 10, Section N, workforce housing overlay zone effective December 3rd, 2016.
So that public hearing is now open?
Mr. Chairman, two administrative matters. We did, as a commission, receive a letter from Bill Rice, Chairman of the Planning Commission, with regards to their review. Their conclusion by unanimous vote was that the additional six-month moratorium was not inconsistent with the town's POCD. We also received a letter from the Capital Region Council of Governments dated December 19th, 2016, stating that the referral finds no apparent conflict with the regional plans or policies or the concerns of neighboring towns.
Very good. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak to this application? If I may, sir.
Name's Eric Wellman, 21 Madison Lane. When I think about what the WHOZ is intended to do, I think about, you know, making Simsbury a more affordable place to live for people, you know, people who live here or work here, I believe should also be able to live here. So I'm supportive of that. I'm also supportive of smart growth. Unfortunately, I don't think WHOZ accomplishes either of those things. So I look at the affordability issue. I understand that the technical definition of affordability on WHOZ means that we would be, people could buy a house that's pushing $300,000. It's a little bit like saying that, you know, a Tiffany pen is affordable. Affordable to who? Is it affordable, you know, when you're thinking about really the intent of what the WHOZ is trying to do? You know, the reality is, it's been a disaster for a couple of neighborhoods. You have developers who are interested in coming in, building dense housing that doesn't fit with the, with the character of the neighborhood, and at the end of the day, it doesn't make Simsbury any more affordable than it was before. And, you know, as I read the POCD and I think about the spirit of the POCD, you know, I would sum it up by saying, you know, let's plan for smart growth, let's make sure we keep Simsbury beautiful in that process. And I don't feel like the WHOZ does that. So I'd encourage this group to find and promote creative ways to grow our town, grow our tax base, promote affordability, but WHOZ just doesn't do that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Toner, would you like to add anything?
A question for staff. If we don't make it by, will we have the new regs by July?
We are working on that.
Are we discussing whether they should be?
No, we're discussing with just the continuation. It's just that, because it's a deadline of July, whatever it was. Pretty close, seeing that it took us a year already to get where we are.
Yeah, I think maybe we should, I don't know, should we close the public hearing here, seeing no other people? So I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Hearing is closed. No discussion. It sounds like we're moving, to your point, Kevin, it sounds like we're moving to create or alter the existing regulation and to the public's point, does it, has it been contemplated? I don't think it has been by this board that we want to go, if, there is the option of...
Chairman here, I think you need to go on to your old applications here. Follow the agenda.
Agenda item number five, Mr. Chairman.
Do we know? All right.
Unless you would like to adjust your agenda to take up Agenda Item 5.2?
No, I don't, we don't need to do that. Thank you, Kevin, for keeping me in.
You have your cheat sheet.
Yeah, it's the same thing, isn't it? Old business, application 1645 of Richard Wagner, Jr., agent, 1285 Hop Meadow Street, for a site plan amendment pursuant to Article 7, Section E2 of the Town of Simsbury zoning regulations for a change of use for the personal service business CrossFit Simsbury on the property located at 1285 Hop Meadow Street, assessor's map I-05 block 403 lot 17, Zone B2. It's been continued, and a decision must be rendered by tonight. We have seen very little correspondence from the applicant. There's been no formal request for an extension, and I believe since we are to act on that tonight, that unfortunately, my understanding and recommendation that we'll have to deny that application and have the applicant go through the process the correct way. So, should we, can we discuss that or not yet?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, just as you stated, from an administrative standpoint, this application came in. The applicant at last month's hearing asked for you to table it to give them additional time to prepare and revise their site plan to submit to you. As site plan approval, application process, you have 65 days to act. We did reach out to the applicant and ask that they submit a request for an extension in writing. As of 4 o'clock this afternoon, maybe 5-ish, Mike Lynn did not receive that, and I have had no further contact with the applicant with regards to that extension. It is an application to solidify a change from retail to service in the form of a gymnasium on a property that has been historically used for retail sales. Required through our regulations is submission of a site plan and the vetting of that site plan. We met with the client, the applicant. Every applicant's a client of ours. We met with the applicant to discuss some of the issues associated with the site plan. We're awaiting revisions of that site plan, and the issue there is, you know, formulating the use of space, both internal and external to the property, and tried to explain to the property owner that you can't just take an area that was formerly designated for parking and turn it into service without looking at the potential conflicts of cars and people and how that conflict could be managed, and they understood that, and that's why we're waiting for a site plan. If you were to make any action this evening, I would ask you to contemplate the issues associated with the requirements under site plan and perhaps come to the conclusion that based on your regulations, the information submitted as part of the application process does not contain all of the required information contained in the zoning regulations with regards to a complete application. The regulations under this aspect require a complete application, which includes a site plan, and we do not have all of that information before you this evening. So in essence, if you were taking a negative action, it would be for noncompliance with the requirements of your zoning regulations.
Understood. The only other thing I would say is that, you know, Rick being a steward of the community, I would say maybe staff or we could work on something in terms of the fee for reapplication.
That's set by ordinance, and that would have to go to the selectmen. We have no issues, perhaps supporting where you're going with that request.
There would be an issue or?
No, no, I, staff wouldn't have an issue, but that is a decision that the selectmen have to make, since that is town ordinance.
Well, I think, I mean, the amount, again, in terms of affordability is arbitrary. I would, I wouldn't mind putting in front of the selectmen to ask them if they would kindly waive the fee on his reapplication, given that I think he's trying to do something good for the town. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on that. I mean, it's not a big deal, but...
No, I agree with that.
I just wanted to publicly say that because I like Rick a lot, and obviously, his family's been a part of Simsbury for a very long time and had businesses here for a very long time. So based on what Jamie has just mentioned to the board, wait, is there anything else there? So old business number two, application 1650, the text amendment to the Town of Simsbury zoning regs to be enacted as Article 3, Section A1A for a six-month moratorium as in addition to the previously approved 12-month moratorium, which would have expired on January 9th of 2017 and will now expire on July 10th, 2017, on applications for or approval of permits for development under Article 10, Section N, workforce.
Do you want to do this one first?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, on your application number 16-45, are you prepared to make a decision this evening?
Yes. Does anybody like to make a motion regarding?
I make a motion that we deny application 16-45 on the basis that it was lacking complete information and just being a negative action.
Second. Kevin, grade second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to follow up with what you said, quick discussion? That if we would...
Yeah, we'll make the applicant aware that if any subsequent application requires a fee, if they would like relief from that fee, they can bring that to the board of selectmen.
Okay, and that it was denied just because of the information we had?
Again, as Mr. Peterson has said, Mr. Wagner has been very cooperative in our dealings with him in trying to meet the regulations and comply with all aspects of the site plan requirements.
Now we move on to old business applications number two, which I just read. Do I need to read it again? All right. So I'd entertain a motion to approve application 1650?
Mr. Chairman, I make motion that we approve application 1650.
Second. Before we do that, could we add to the motion that would be effective?
It has an effective date of December 30th, 2016.
30th or 31st?
31st.
31st.
31st is a Saturday.
Things can't be effective on Saturday?
I don't know. I want to sort of back down to this thing.
My notes say 31st, but...
The public notice says December 30th.
Okay.
Date's not going to make a difference.
No, I agree.
So it's not effective December 30th. So we got our correct public notice.
And I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Receipt of new applications, Mr. Toner, application number 1651 of Gerard G. Toner, agent, Town of Simsbury owner, for a site plan amendment for the construction of a pavilion on the property located at 100 Old Farms Road, Zone R40. Mr. Toner?
Thank you. As some of you may know, Brian Kosher, who's a longtime resident in Simsbury, passed away in 2015. Both he and his wife were active, very active in the community and active users of Century Farms, the Century Farms complex. His wife, Chris Boswell, asked that, in his memory, a fund be set up for, or all donations go towards a fund for an improvement at the Century Farms complex. With that, they also did a fundraiser at the golf course. Their total donations were up just over $15,000. And in August of 2000, actually, August of this year, the selectmen did two things. They voted to transfer that fund balance to the Friends of Century Farms to administer any improvements that were done. They also, at the same time, we had been working concurrently with Mrs. Boswell on a proposed improvement, and we looked at a number of areas. They were both active, they're hockey players, they used paddle courts, used really the entire facility. And we sought some assistance from a local landscape architect to help, and we basically settled on the idea of a pavilion up in the area of the paddle tennis courts, tennis courts, and kind of in between the access road, if you can kind of picture that. I think it's hopefully designated or clear enough in the application. So the selectmen, in addition to transferring those funds, they approved the project as proposed and asked that the, under state statutes, that the planning commission give 8-24 approval, for which they did. So right now, I'm here asking, you know, for a site plan amendment for the construction of a pavilion. I'm not sure if you have a picture. I have a color one to pass around. This is the model that they, that Mrs. Boswell has, and we have agreed to, and we feel it's compatible with the facility. It'll be a nice enhancement, and it's in an area that's actively used, that people can use, you know, for picnicking, even in the winter, you know, to gather there afterwards. And again, we think it'll be a, you know, a nice honor, you know, to him, but also really an enhancement to, you know, to our facility. So, you know, with that, I will, you know, we're at requesting, again, you know, site approval, site plan amendment for this project to go forward.
Is that level with the parking lot or the downhill?
It is, you know, and it's just, it's just below the level of the parking lot. One of the reasons we asked, it was Terry Hahn with LADA we asked to get her guidance because we wanted certainly, didn't want any issues with accessibility, and we kept it close enough to the parking lot that there is really not an issue there, and there's enough level spot. We have, there'll have to be a little movement. We did have a contractor come up that's going to do the concrete slab, and did not see any problems, and certainly we can handle the accessibility, you know, to the pavilion, you know, very easily as well.
Do we have a handicap spot on that side?
We do. Well, actually, we're redoing that, that part, we're going to be restriping, actually, all our lots, and that's the last one to be done. So there is a handicap spot, it's actually down more towards the entrance, the ramp now that goes into the tennis courts down towards the playground, so we'll add another one, you know.
On that side?
On that side, right.
And will it, will there be a walkway to it, or will it just be the...
There will. We envisioned, you know, probably a stone dust type of path that would be, that would be accessible.
And these are the swing sets down here, right? Is that right?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Just trying to... Will there be electricity to it?
Not planned right now, no.
I just, I mean, in looking at this, it's, it's got some lamps, and I, I'm just curious.
I don't think our furniture will.
The building envelope.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we should...
I don't think that comes with it.
One of the things they did talk about, we've actually had some preliminary discussions. They were talking about possibly having like a fire pit sort of thing out there, and the fire marshal was, was okay with it. I don't know if that'll be part of this initial phase of it, but, you know, particularly for the folks playing paddle tennis, you know, in the winter, and people that are skating that may want to go over there, it'd be a nice, you know, kind of a nice feature, so...
Or replace the chimney we took out of the skating warming room. Fireplace?
Right.
Are we required to send this to design review?
No, that's within your discretion.
I really don't see a need for it to go to design review. It's just a pavilion, and it's, it's at the rec complex, it's not like it's on a main road, so...
Can we act on this tonight, or do we have to...
There's nothing, under state statute, you have 65 days to act. As Mr. Post, in response to his question, just to clarify that, it is within your discretion to send it to design review. There is no mandatory referral. Staff did not proactively send it, given the location, that it is not visible from a public street, it is only visible internal to the site.
And I think it's adjacent to another pavilion, which is right over at the swing center, playground area, so if you look at the playground area, there's a large pavilion too. From the looks of this, it's a lot better than the one that's at the playground area, which is probably not 100 feet away.
And so the only path would be from the parking lot to the pavilion, or would there be another path?
Yeah, it's really the closest area. You know, certainly they could walk, and even, you know, I'm sure you could walk from the other side up the hill, but as far as the, you know, and mainly for accessibility would just be that.
It's a pretty steep grade there.
Yeah, it is.
But I think it's a great project. I think, should be grateful that people came in with a project like this, willing to donate it, and it fits in perfect with the whole Century Farms complex. And one of the things that we've always heard a complaint from is shelter, when people want to picnic or whatever with their kids. So it is a great location, you know, by the tennis courts and also by the playground.
Yeah, even from the sun, you know, kids, people are getting off the courts or they get a little...
Or the pool. Go over and picnic, so it's a great project.
So I entertain a motion to approve...
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move the application that we approved, application 1651 of Gerard G. Toner, agent, Town of Simsbury owner, for a site plan amendment.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
One least, sir.
We're looking at, we'd really, as soon as the weather permits, we'll get the slab in, and then I think the pavilion's going to be a quick, pretty quick, you know, construction. So we're looking, you know, it'd be nice if we could have it in, you know, mid-May and there, and I know the family would, you know, would really, I think we would too, it would be nice before the summer when it really gets, you know, gets busy up there, that people can use it, so...
You know, have lightning protection and all that fun stuff?
You know, it's a good, it's not part of this, although we've done it with, you know, out at, you know, out at Curtis Park, we've got the lightning protection system, the automated system, but we're trying to look at whether that should be grounded or not. I think that's typically what we, so I will make sure that that's addressed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
General commission business. Discussion of new and ongoing projects.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick update of where we are with the zoning regulations. I'm able to see some comments together, and I'm glad we're all putting the sections together. So I got an email with some 248 pages today that we will be going over internally. It was my thoughts that we would vet this internally to refine the product before we give it to the commission as a whole and try and eliminate any simple errors we see in the initial product so that you're not, you're focused, you can be more focused in your review versus looking at reading the first vetted copy and say, well, there are still some inconsistencies. So if you would allow us the privilege to go through those through the holiday season. Glenn sent me an email today wondering, you know, what would be the next timing of this, and he suggested perhaps January 9th. That could be a good date, but I also don't want to take too, you know, here we are the week before Christmas, followed up by New Year's, so we in essence have a short week this week, shorter week next week, and then we're already in gear of doing agendas for your next meeting, which wouldn't give you much time also as a commission to review. So I'm thinking that we take the first, next two to three weeks internally, we refine that copy, and then hopefully get it to you mid-January or even in the first meeting in February.
Because we do or do not have a second meeting in January, is that Paul on the holiday?
I believe one meeting in January, one meeting in February.
One meeting?
The way the calendar is running.
Okay. So probably that first meeting in February makes the most of it.
That's the first meeting in February.
Can you send it to the commission members prior to or after?
That would be, that's my goal, is not to say, have, hey, here's our great document, and you're going to say, wonderful, Jamie.
When I saw the changes that he had just sent over, right?
Okay.
That was sent to us last week. I mean, those were great, to see that too, to see the progression.
The ones that are meeting, probably?
Yeah, yeah.
So again, we, just from a reformatting standpoint, it's kind of title, authority, and purpose is right at the beginning, the administrative part's at the beginning, we get into zoning districts, definitions are at the end, or, you know, you only need to go to the last 50 pages if you need to look up a word, although if not, it's the beginning, and also if we need to add or modify a definition, we're just reprinting the last 30 or 40 pages, we're not reprinting 240 pages. We're also vetting internally. A lot of regulations are set up, so if there's an R15, R30, or R15, R25, we used to have a 30, R40, and et cetera, a lot of times R15 would say, here are all your permitted uses. R25 in essence is identical to those. A lot of times it'll say permitted uses, see R15. And we're still going back and forth internally whether we want to do that and not hone in on the length of pages versus someone just says, I want to know what I can do in an R40. So if someone says, I want to know what I want to do in an R40 with a, kind of the old format, we'd have to give them the R30. So R40 would say, you can do everything that's in R25, and then you can do everything that's in R15, so we're actually printing 10 pages. But there's redundancy, and I have to repeat everything for each section, instead of doing it in 10 pages, I may be doing it in 30 pages. But when someone asks for a particular section, I only print that section, only look in that section. So I'm trying even mentally, as your director, to say, Jamie, don't hone in on the amount of pages, it's not the length of the document, it's the information contained.
It's the ease of use.
That's right.
And ease of use.
Plus, when somebody, if they're able to go onto our website, and like, the less clicks, the better, to get to, you know, the tenant, yeah.
Yeah, you know, they go to the R40 and says, you know, two more clicks to get to what you want, versus I'm on the R40 page, this is what I need to do. So it may mean the page count goes up a little bit, and there may be...
It doesn't mean that, it doesn't mean it's getting printed, it just means that there's more pages.
Yeah.
Correct.
Well, the information is where you want it.
So right now, what it's set up is, again, you would say it's redundant because... It may be more paper if you're printing it out, but we also have to be cognizant of the fact that it's mostly digital. And the less clicks is probably better.
Yeah, that's great.
Well, we hope probably within the next four weeks to have a vetted copy to you in a true first rock draft.
Cool.
We'll spend, you know, time, as I told my staff, we'll probably dedicate one day a week perhaps for the next eight weeks to get through this internally. Again, we have to read the 248 pages and go back and make sure we're not missing anything in our existing 200-page document.
Yeah.
Any changes in the activity in the northern gateway?
In the northern gateway? Northern being like Westminster North?
Even further north. Big Y.
2018, if at all.
Alana's dependent on decisions they've made in Massachusetts and the economy in New England. It's not a project that is scheduled to break ground in perhaps 2017. We haven't heard anything that they're pulling out of Simsbury, but the project has been delayed.
Second? All in favor?
Kevin.
All of us. Derek, now, Derek, second.
What's up, Derek?